Good evening. I'd like to call the order, the city council meeting for July 2nd, 2018. Please stand for invocation filed by pledge of allegiance, and I think we'll be led by Councilperson Ellis for the invocation, please.
Let us pray. Gracious God, we thank you once again for bringing us, for guiding us and strengthening us. Lord, we ask that you touch us, touch our hearts and touch our minds as we go about the business of the city of Jerusaleeville. And, Lord, we ask for, we ask for your blessings upon all the people of this city, all the people of this state, and especially blessings on the workers of this city. Lord bless and keep us, give us strength, give us guidance, give us love, in the name of Jesus. Amen.
(Inaudible) United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Ron. Row call, please. Councilperson Sestovny.
Present.
Councilperson Yon.
Present.
Councilperson Maples.
Here.
Councilperson Hawkins.
Here.
Councilperson Gill.
Here.
Councilperson Owen.
Here.
Councilperson Ellis.
Here.
Councilperson Samuel.
Here.
Let the record reflect, eight council members present. I need approval of the minutes for our council workshop, June 18th, 2018.
So moved.
Second. Got a motion, and actually, two seconds, but I think I heard Nathan Samuel's name for, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. I need a motion for approval of the minutes for our regular council proceedings on June 18th, 2018.
So moved. Second.
Got a motion in second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. I need approval of the agenda, but we will be tabling under new business number 12. The clerk was giving the, to advertise for tonight, and actually, it was their desire to have it on at the next meeting. So if anybody is here for zoning change for property at 1417 Old Salem Road, that will be heard at our next meeting. So I'd like everybody to know that. So I will take a motion to approve the agenda with tabling of number 12.
So moved. Second.
Got a motion in a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Let the record show, Councilperson White is here. Claims to be approved. General?
We have civil city claims.
Can you carry?
You do? I don't know.
I have a hand carry. What is the amount? The amount's $1,459.13. I have a few things, we might want to wait on the...
Total.
The total. Did you have anything that you needed to bring up? Okay. On page one, and the, under law, under the, Les Merkley, we need a map for that.
A map?
Mm-hmm.
Like a map?
For the 14338.
Okay.
Once again, I am pulling the 585 for the Joe Hubbard. I was clear on what that total was going to be. That was on page one. And on page six, Heather, let's see where that, down towards the bottom, under City Hall, under, well, both under lease payments, and the capital improvement is the $70,000.
Yes.
That's only paid once a year. We pay the $160,000 twice a year, and that $70,000 is already paid this year. And I had the clerk double check, so are we sure that that's...
I'll look into it and see.
Yeah, and you had the lease attached to the claim, so I read that whole lease, and I thought, wait a minute, we already paid that. So I don't think...
I think it is just once a year.
We only pay that once a year. So we need to reduce that by $70,000.
Yep, I think so.
That's on page six, the $70,000 under the City Hall capital improvement, lease payment. I just have a couple of things I need for you to check on. On page three, I'm sorry, nobody was here on Friday when I...
Yeah, I had a meeting at West Quarter.
That's okay. Under fire, all of the, you see all the T-Mobiles?
Mm-hmm.
There was no claims for those. And then when I noticed, I mean, they go back to, what, January, December, May, I mean, they're all over. Since there was no claims, can you just verify?
They may have been in the utilities to pay that on Friday.
They may have, but with, it looks like, the way they keep going up, just to make sure, you know, what late payments were paid or whatever, just make sure everything was, I couldn't check them because there, since there was no claims.
Right.
If you just double check those.
I will.
That'll be great. And on page four, there's a bumper to bumper claim.
Which one?
It is for the 24674.
Okay.
I just need for you to check, that's for a Cadillac. Just make sure the city has a Cadillac that we didn't, weren't billed for wrong parts, is probably right, but just to verify what's add.
To the attorneys?
Got a car we don't know about?
They have Cadillac trucks. I mean, I don't know. I know they make trucks, too.
Yeah, it's an early model, and of course, Friday, which, who usually does that? She was, she does the 410, so she's on Friday. And then a couple of issues ahead is, you know, we had invoice that was dated for, you know, February 22nd, and then I guess the Riverlink, boy, we had a $70 fees.
Yes, they started charging us late fees now, when they originally said they weren't going to charge us late fees. So there was nowhere else for me to pay that, and if I didn't pay it, there would be another $25 every month.
Oh, okay. I've just never seen that on claims before.
We're currently disputing it, yeah, but it's one of those things, you have to pay it, and hopefully, they'll credit us back.
All right. And then the last thing that I have is, you early paid for a pound class for 44686.
Which one, what page is that?
That's on page, oop, I went right down the page, I'm sorry. Page one. Let's just be mindful of that. That's not authorized for early pay.
Where do you see that?
I'm not, I'm not pulling it, I'm just...
No, yeah, but I just need to know what to mention.
Our early pay is just utilities.
It's the fourth claim, on page one.
Did anybody else have any questions or anything? If not, we need to...
The donation one?
Yes. So we need to reduce for 585 and the $70,000, and then we need to add for the hand carry of $1,459.15.
And what's the $1,459?
For hand carry. Was that for insurance? There was a vehicle wreck, and a city vehicle backed into a person's car, causing damage, and Jana asked me to hand carry it.
And that was not 15, it was 13. 14, 15, and 13.
Oh, sorry.
Correct.
14, 15. Can you double check my numbers real quick?
All right, so I will need a, unless anybody has any more questions or comments, I'll need a motion to approve the amended total. So moved. Do I have a second? Getting worried here for a minute. We got a motion in the second to approve the amended claim amount of $574,749.12. Any further questions or comments? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed, motion carries.
We have parks tonight for 200, did you have any other issues on parks?
I just had a couple of things on parks.
Okay.
That was on page three. You have, they're all under Olivia Mann, I guess they're for reimbursements, but the claims included tax, so...
Yes, I addressed, I mentioned that.
If we're approving the full claim, they'll have to, the claim's already submitted, so they can't get, take it off, so I guess they'll be responsible for the tax.
Is that what you'd like? Normally, we kind of give them one ride, I guess, which I probably shouldn't, but she wasn't aware of that. So now, she knows not to have tax attached.
Well, we also have one under Sarah Nor, the 4554.
Yes.
It had tax as well.
Yes. Both of those were addressed.
Okay. So the claim amount still...
Okay. 268,332.18.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Got a motion in second to approve the parks claim of $268,332.18. Any further discussion?
There was a question that I had on, on the parks claims, and it was about concrete bottom landing at the river stage, and my question was, did we get the permit from Army Corps of Engineers before we done this?
That's not a question for me.
If Paul could address that.
Sure. As far as I know, we have a permit that lasts till 2024 to do work down at the river stage there. It would include dredging and any kind of other work. I'll check with the Corps of Engineer to make sure that's correct, but we had a permit because we had it taken out back in 2014 when we did some work down at the river stage.
Is that the only claim you had a question on?
No, I had talked with the mayor on that one thing, so we'll wait for that.
Okay. So all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Thank you, Heather. Report of the clerk. Okay. Well, as you all can see, the projector's totally gone, and I have ordered a lightbulb to see if that will work till we can get our quote in for replacement. Company that I went through for the bulb, we're not even sure that's what the issue is. Went through with the bulb, didn't have them, so I won't be getting it in until July the 11th from another company. They're out of stock. That thing is so old. So the projector's out. Our backup system, audio, we just found out today, is broken. I heard her say something about the door. It's the door to the audio thing. There's a pin bent. So anyway, the company, the people we've been working with are coming in tomorrow to meet with Patsy and I. So when we get a better idea of what the cost is going to be, I'll shoot you all an email and let you know, but we, most likely, this is going to have to be replaced and upgraded, which is also going to cost some more work to be done in the podium. But we can't use our display or anything, so. All right, well, just keep us posted, I appreciate that. Hey, we have no old business, so we're moving on to new business. We table number 12, so we're moving on to 13, which is Les Merkley. This, we will have a public hearing. Ordnance changing the zoning map designation of a certain tract of property located at 519 to 525 Michigan Avenue, and fully described and attached Exhibit A. We're going from HC to DC. Just downtown commercial, right?
This comes to you with a favorable recommendation from the Planning Commission. As you all may recall, a few months ago, the Department of Redevelopment and the Department of Planning and Zoning came and rezoned several properties downtown, in the downtown area, to downtown commercial. The goal is to try to be consistent as possible with our commercial zoning downtown. And when we did that, we also noticed or asked property owners in the downtown area if they would be interested in rezoning their property to downtown commercial. And this is one of those properties, 519, 525 Michigan Avenue, and they're represented here today by Council John Kraft. I'll turn over to John, fairly straightforward, except he, this, John, I'm correct, this was the old Cut Rig, right?
No, 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 TNT.
TNT, okay.
For the record, John Kraft with Law Firm of Young, Lynn Anderson Kraft, 126 West Spring Street in New Albany. As Mr. Merkley indicated, this is based upon an application filed by my client. My client is Shay and Young. It is a real estate partnership. One of those partners was my deceased partner, Tom Young. The property itself is the TNT at the front, they're on Court, and then if any of you've gone by it, there's a small building that connects to that behind it. One of the things that has occurred throughout the process of trying to rent that is the fact that Highway Commercial, even though it is as intense as what it is, it disallows a number of small businesses. And so the result of that was when Mr. Pruitt and the city reached out and said, we would like to offer you the opportunity to rezone from Highway Commercial to Downtown Commercial. My client determined this was in the best interest. The TNT will continue to remain there for the time being, as with much of that area, it is ever-changing. There is also a desire, of course, with the city, that it does some changing as well. We're here this evening asking for the rezone of this property, again, 519 to 525 Michigan Avenue, that also fronts Concord Avenue. And many of you are probably familiar with it, there is a walkway that walks through from the TNT building over to the other fireworks store. That walkway, where it ends at this property, that is the property line. So ultimately, that walkway, while those properties are competing against each other, to begin with, and of course, this time of year, I'm sure they're down there in their swamp, they didn't notice several police cars sitting out front, probably just for protection. But ultimately, we are desirous of taking this from Highway Commercial to Downtown Commercial. As Mr. Merkley indicated, it does come to you with a favorable recommendation from the Plan Commission, and we would ask that you approve it this evening. I'm more than happy to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
So if I understood you correctly, this, you're not asking for the zoning change in lieu of a different development going there, you're asking for this in lieu of potentially a different tenant going there?
Well, TNT will remain. The building behind it, there, many years ago, there was a video store, when people used to rent videos. And since that video store was there, it's been very difficult to get anyone in, based again upon the intensity of Highway Commercial. You would tend to believe that with Highway Commercial, because it is such an intense use, that it would allow those items that are below that. It actually doesn't. There have been a couple requests for barber shops and things of that nature in that back building. TNT is under a lease that'll continue to remain there. The back portion, of course, we're looking for some tenants. We've had some that wanted to move in, and ultimately, when Mr. Dade was still in the Plan Commission office with Mr. Pruitt, there were some letters written indicating that that cannot go there unless you obtain a variance. So the desire is to open up that back part for some additional uses, more small business uses. TNT will continue to remain there, and certainly will continue to remain there as a legal, non-conforming use under the downtown commercial. And then ultimately, if and when that leaves, then it would leave that open for further development.
Any more questions for open up public hearing? At this time, I'm going to officially open up the public hearing for the properties of 519 to 525 Michigan Avenue, moving from Highway Commercial to Downtown Commercial. If the zoning is approved, anybody wish to speak for or against this application, please come forward, state your name and address for the record. Seeing none, I'm officially closing the public hearing, and we need an ordinance number.
35.
I'll entertain a motion.
So moved. Second.
Got a motion in the second, passed 2018 OR 35. Any further questions? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries.
Thank you very much.
We got ordinance changing the zoning map designation of a certain tract of property located at 820 and 828 Spring Street, fully described and attached Exhibit A, from C2 and C1 to DC. Is that just two properties, or is it all the ones in between like before? Is it just 820 and 828?
No, two separate properties, it's two, two properties, 820 and 828 Spring Street. This is the same matter, or same issue. It's a request to rezone the property to downtown commercial. It's owned by John Walpert. I don't know if someone is here to represent Mr. Walpert or not, I don't believe so. But this, again, is a favorable, favorable recommendation from the Planning Commission. Again, we're just trying to zone as much commercial property downtown to downtown commercial as possible.
Does the council have any questions for Les before open up public hearing? At this time, I'm officially opening up the public hearing for the properties located at 820 and 828 Spring Street, with zoning change request from C2 and C1 to DC. Is there anybody here that wishes to speak for or against? Seeing none, I'll officially close. And I will entertain a motion if there's no further questions.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion in the second, passed 2018 OR 36. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Now we have an ordinance changing the zoning map designation of a certain tract of property located at 2015 Allison Lane, and fully described and attached Exhibit A, from R1 to OC.
This again comes to you with a favorable recommendation from the Planning Commission. The property owner, Pamela Johns, I believe, if you're familiar with this property, at 2015 Allison Lane, is currently Edward Jones Investments office. It's been there for quite some time. I believe it was brought to the city's attention that it was not zoned for that type of business operation. So Ms. Johns has applied to rezone that property from the current zone of R1, which is low-density residential, to office commercial. And I believe also, there was a variance that was granted to allow this as well, but it would be contingent upon the rezoning. And I don't know if Ms. Johns is here or not. If not, I will try to entertain any questions that you want to ask.
I can, the conversation at Planning and Zoning was that she wants to expand, and in order for her to expand the office a little bit, this Planning and Zoning Director said this is the way to go, to get it rezoned properly. And there was no one speaking against the rezone.
Yeah, we've never had any issues there. It's right in front of my neighborhood and in my district, so. If this, nobody has any further questions, I'm officially opening up public hearing for the property located at 2018 Allison Lane, going from an R1 to an OC. Is there anyone that wishes to speak for or against? Seeing none, I'll officially close, and I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Got a motion in the second, passed 2018 OR 37. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. You're on a roll, Mr. Merkley. We got another ordinance changing the zoning map designation of a certain tract of property located at 511 Highway 62, MBG Highway 62, fully described Exhibit A, going from a C1 to a PD C2.
Yes. Again, a favorable recommendation to rezone this property, which is approximately 28 and 1/2 acres. To zone that from the existing zone, classification of C2, which is large-scale general commercial, to a PUD, a planned unit development. This property is right across Highway 62 or 10th Street from Gobroth Parkway, it's where the water tower is on that side. There are several parcels in that area, but these parcels that are being rezoned to the PUD are owned by the same developer across the street, which is Denton Floyd, that's developed in that property. They're just simply asking that the PUD, that's on that side of the road, also be on the other side of the road for the property that they own there, on the water tower side of 62. I know there were some questions earlier regarding gas stations. Regardless of what this zoned, our standards regarding the gas stations within a mile of another would apply. So I believe there are, I believe there are some representatives from the applicant here, if anyone wants to speak or has any questions, but that's, you've already approved the PUD on the other side of the road, they're just wanting to extend it.
I think he was in safety.
I don't have to say anything, just here for questions. Scott Hannah with Heritage Engineering, just here to answer questions. But if anybody wants a copy of the PUD, I have some extra copies.
But I don't have any questions.
The Redevelopment Commission has talked about this property at length, about doing some improvements of some infrastructure with the potential roadway. We're also discussing and doing, in the design phase, of some improvements at Utica Sellersburg Road to help ease the flow of traffic coming from Charlestown Pike onto Highway 62. That'll also open up to another access point to this property beyond the four-way stop I said at the roundabout, Gobroth Farm Way.
Does anybody have any questions before opening up for public comment? At this time, I'm going to officially open up the public comment for this property located at 511 Highway 62, MBG Highway 62. It is going from, request is going from a C2 to a PD PUD C2. Is there anybody here that wishes to speak for or against this application for zoning change? Seeing none, I'll officially close public hearing, and I will entertain a motion.
So moved. Second.
Got a motion in second, passed 2018 OR 38. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Congratulations. All right. Matt Owen, Resolution Supporting an MBA/WBA team located in Metro Louisville, Kentucky.
Thank you.
You have the floor.
Before you is a resolution, basically, just what you just said, if you read through, talks about the city being supportive of an MBA/WBA team coming to Metro Louisville. In the audience, we have Auburn Park City Councilman Klump. He's going to come up and speak just briefly on the ordinance before you, and kind of how it came before you in the first place.
If you'd please speak your name and your address for the record, please.
Yes. Andrew Klump, K L U M P, at 900 Auburn Parkway, Unit 3. Thanks for having me. Let me just give you a brief history real quick. About March of 2017, Metro Louisville passed a resolution unanimously, supporting an MBA franchise coming to Louisville. And then in December 2017, I sponsored a resolution in Auburn Park, encouraging, or reiterating that, but encouraging all the surrounding cities do the same, including all the incorporated cities within Metro Louisville, which is 83. And so now, we're seeing this opportunity to show solidarity and more of a regional footprint of support in pursuing an MBA franchise. And you all can be that gateway to the regional support. No other city outside of Metro Louisville has done this yet, but you all have that opportunity to be forward-thinking with this. But why is this important? This is important because Louisville has to do, not just Louisville, the region has to do something that is completely different, to make ourselves stand out. The NBA is getting ready to expand very soon. Seattle's going to get the first team, and it's going to be up whoever's going to be most prepared to get the second team. That means Las Vegas, Mexico City, Kansas City, and Louisville are the strongest competitors at this point. So oftentimes, I feel like people in this, in this region, especially Louisville, tend to be afraid to differentiate themselves because of the associated costs. But what you have in front of you has no cost. It's completely free. And so this is an opportunity to do something that would separate Louisville at no cost. And I think what's important is you oftentimes see other cities, just they'll hand over their numbers, their metro, their TV ratings, all these different things. But when you have a groundswell of legislative support, I mean, that's unprecedented. No one's done that before. The only time you've ever seen that is Northern Kentucky did, I think, pass one resolution supporting the MLS coming to Cincinnati. And they ended up getting one, although in full candor, they were expecting the stadium to be in Northern Kentucky and not Cincinnati. But with that said, we can do something in that mold, but on a grander scale. And you all can start that movement here. We're just talking about benefits for you all. You have, if a team comes, you have increased hotels usage, increased bar and restaurant usage. You have, your property values will go, become more increased because people will be drawn to the city more. It brings Louisville and the surrounding area into the modern era. And it just increases your standard of living. Being able to go to the highest level of professional athletic event raises your standard of living and your quality of life. And the same thing can be said for the entire region, not just Louisville, and not just Southern Indiana. With that, if you have any questions, I am here to field any. If you... With that, if you have any questions, I am here to field any, if you, anything about the viability of the team or anything like that.
First, I'd like to know if either you or Councilperson Owen, have you discussed this with Mayor Moore? Does it have his support?
Yeah, I spoke with Mayor Moore briefly and he didn't have any objections. It's been said both by Mayor Moore and by Mayor Fisher, you know, what's good for Southern Indiana is good for Louisville and what's good for Louisville is good for Southern Indiana. And this is just another opportunity that we have to kind of bridge that gap regionally and try to embrace each other as we move forward with this type of opportunity for economic development. As Councilman Klump said, you know, this is something that would bring more folks to downtown due to our proximity to the Yum Center. We've seen a increased interest in hotel development here in Jeffersonville. This would help spur that if we were to land, if Louisville were to land such a team. So there's really, we couldn't see, in speaking back and forth, that we couldn't see a downside to going ahead and pushing forward and just showing the NBA and the, you know, region that Jeffersonville is behind Louisville and we're going to go to other groups and try to ask for similar legislation to be presented and passed also.
Councilperson Zastani, you brought this up here excited about this?
Yeah, I'm excited about this. I'm so glad you brought this forward. I'm originally from Northern Ohio, Cleveland area.
Okay.
And I don't think a lot of people realize the difference between a college town and a professional town. And I would love for Louisville and our region to have a top-tier professional team. Because with that comes a lot of travel, increased air flights, direct flights to communities. People travel to say, hey, I want to follow, I've never been to Louisville before. I've never been to Dallas before. I've never been to Cleveland before. I've never been to wherever. And my team's going to go there and play. Let's go. And I do that for my teams. I travel, I watch the Indians, go watch the Browns. It's tough being a Browns fan. And the other thing it does is the college teams we have here separate the community, unfortunately. There's a lot of IU fans, there's a lot of Louisville fans, and there's a lot of UK fans, and we all live among each other. When you have a professional team that's over and above the college team, everybody comes together. It does, you could still have your college rivalries and your college team, but it's the local, the local team that everybody comes together to support. So all the thing I would say is I wish this would say top-tier professional sports because I know it's NBA now and I'd take any top-tier professional sports here. I think it'd be such a benefit people don't realize. But we can, I think as a community, when you look at some of the populations of like Oklahoma City, I'm sure you've done some of that work. The MSA, the Metropolitan Statistical Area, where they judge the number of people that actually work and commute and live within that area has the same population as Louisville. And they have a professional NBA team. You look at Jacksonville, they have a professional NFL team, and we have the same population as Jacksonville, Florida. And you can go around and look at a lot of communities where we're big enough to support some of these professional teams if we commute, if we come together as you're trying to do. So kudos to you and I'm so glad that this is coming forward and I'll support it 100%. Hope it helps and we can actually make it happen.
Mr. Sotomayor, do you want me to offer the amendment you discussed about adding the figure LeBron James?
Well, I had a question.
I don't, I do not want to change this all, I'm just stating my opinion.
Do you think we can get this done in time for LeBron James jump teams when he leaves the Lakers?
I think the expansion can be within four years potentially, so I think.
Another thing I wanted to add as an NBA fan, Seattle, how'd they get the first pick? They've already had a team and lost it once.
So, okay, so I mean, I will say this, I'll give an example. Houston, when the Oilers left Houston and became the Tennessee Titans in the NFL, everyone thought that LA was a surefire team to get that expansion team. But Houston put together the best package and got that team. So, you know, Seattle is the more than above favorite to get the team simply because the NBA feels like they unjustly took a team away from them. But again, it's not set in stone and that's why I give that example. But they are like, they are still light years ahead of everyone else in that regard.
I have a question. So in the package that the city of Louisville, Metro Louisville, whoever is presenting for a team, is it, I'm assuming that the Yum Center has been designated as the only arena that would be acceptable to that? Or are they, is there talks of a different facility? I'm very, I'm for this happening to begin with, but it seems it would benefit Southern Indiana more if Yum Center was the targeted facility and not a new stadium, say, in the old fairgrounds. So that's where my question comes from.
Well, so, okay, let me be clear here. I'm not affiliated with the investment group, LLC, or anything like that. I'm doing this because I'm passionate about it and I see the draw and what we can do together with this. But Dan Iss has been, when he's come out and talked about this, he's the president of the investment group, he has said that basically the Yum Center is the target. And it kind of seems like the Freedom Hall is an alternate option if for some reason the agreement can't be worked out. But with that said, I personally don't see any lease agreement problems going. I think it will be renegotiated. So I think it would likely be Yum Center.
I could shoot for, you know, Jeff Boat's stadium or something. Just one last thing I will mention, I will add that Councilman Klump and I have reached out to one Southern Indiana. We're going to present to their advisory board to see if we can get their board to show support for this, as well as we've talked with Jim Efferson at the Tourism Bureau. And I think he's going to see if his board will entertain a letter of support also. So there is, there is some swelling support around this on this side of the river and hopefully we can push it forward with some momentum tonight. So I'll make a motion to approve 2018 R6.
Second.
Got a motion, a second to pass 2018 R6. Is there any further comment?
I'd just like to say, thank you for doing this. Really appreciate that. And I think this is a good start to many years of talking and now people are actually doing things. So I'm happy to be a part of that, so. Thank you.
So all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the motion carries.
Thanks, guys. Appreciate it.
Okay, we are moving on. Kim Calabro, an ordinance established non-collective bargaining salary wage administration, it says police, but it's policy, and repealing prior policy.
I do have a PowerPoint, so a bummer that that is not working. You can't use it on the TVs? Oh, they work fine.
Everything's out.
Oh, bummer. I thought Matt thought they were working right now.
No, they're not working. We're audio video.
Yes, I understand that now. Apologize for misunderstanding. I thought Matt thought that the TVs were still working, so I apologize.
I think when the lights went out, it added to our complication.
Well, okay. Would you like a copy? I brought you a copy, thinking you might need. I'm here again, you know, as kind of a follow-up from our workshop that we had, the 2018 salary administration policy, just to kind of go over a couple of the highlights. Everyone should have in their packet a copy of an ordinance that the city attorney prepared along with the salary administration policy. And I highlighted all the changes. And in addition to that is the proposed pay grades for January of 2019. The original goals of the compensation and pay plan review were written to address the external market and internal equity, provide market-based pay ranges to remain competitive and attract and retain quality candidates. We also use that to ensure proper Department of Labor job classifications and to update the salary administration policy. A little bit of the meeting history, we kind of started in 2016. In February, there was a council workshop to discuss the new pay grades, including seasonal pay grades. February 29th of 2016, there was a council workshop where we presented the up-aging pay grades and a seasonal pay grade that was approved. March 2nd, there was a council meeting to talk about the recommendations to hold another workshop for the realignment of pay grades. October 3rd, there was a council meeting where the consultant came in and gave a presentation. On to 2017, in November, there was a council workshop where there was a presentation of pay grade changes that would align with the proposed Department of Labor salary threshold. And then November 21st, there was a council meeting and basically through lack of council support related by Council President Matt Owen at the time, that there was not enough support to move the pay grades forward. Which brings us then to the end of December, first of January, working with the consultant again. January 16th, there was a council workshop, there was a presentation and rationale behind the new pay grade proposals. Everyone was given a three-page document, including all of the recommendations that our external consultant provided. At that meeting, it was decided that the council would nominate a committee. That committee consisted of Councilperson Yon, Owen, and White to get together and make recommendations to the full council. That committee met February 1st, March 23rd, and April 17th. June 18th, we had a council workshop and the committee recommendations were relayed by Councilperson Yon. And then the council voted to proceed with proposed pay grades, but did not approve other recommendations related to longevity or discussion on removal of pay grade. About that time, we were kind of indicated through the city attorney, or the council attorney, that it was up to, council attorney, right? No, you had recommended at the last workshop that the administration would come and present a proposal, so. Basically, the recommendations are, one, increase minimum and maximum pay ranges to be competitive with the market; two, increase hiring manager approval to 35% of the range; three, increase number of pay ranges to better reflect market value ranges; and four, make pay grades 1 through 7 reflect non-exempt positions and grades 8 through 14 reflect exempt positions. The financial impact of the recommendations by the consultant, the total cost is $54,617 to bring 29 people up to the new minimum pay ranges. 44, 340 is out of the general fund with $10,277 being from wastewater and drainage. So basically, I'm here to request today, we're seeking to receive and obtain approval for the new pay grades. I'm here on behalf of the administration to request that we increase the hiring range from 25% to 35%. And I'm here to request a removal of pay grade caps. I think at this point, the mayor wants to come up and speak. The only other thing I wanted to mention, I know Nathan had this concern at the workshop, but just to kind of let you know on a little bit of data, Christine spent some time looking at data. Of 194 total full-time employees excluding fire and police, there are currently 18 employees that are capped. That represents 9% of our employees. 176 are not capped. That represents 91%. With the approval of this proposed pay grade, there would be one person, one employee left that would be capped. The distribution of employees on the new pay grade, there are 77 employees are 50% or above on the pay scale, which represents 40%. There are 117 employees that are below 50% on the pay scale.
Got a question. You're saying that the new pay grades will address all but one? Because last, on the workshop, you said there's four that won't be addressed, that were capped.
That was an estimate and there was one. There's one person who, and they took a position and went down a pay grade.
That was an exception that we knew that.
Yes, yeah. And the other three I thought would be capped, but when we went back and did the math, that would have been the longevity issue. If they would have, if we had looked at doing the longevity of what we were talking about.
So Kim, that was my question. So assuming that this is, again, the recommendation from the administration, is the administration kind of dropping the conversation on the, rolling the longevity in or?
I think we're going to wait and have the discussion on longevity per your all's request. We felt like, I felt like, and I think the mayor and Les thought that trying to have that discussion on top of the other things just seemed to really confuse things and we didn't want employees in particular to start panicking thinking that council or administration was talking about taking away longevity, which, you know, that.
So there won't be any changes to longevity?
Longevity is going to stay as it is.
Right.
Including how it's calculated into the pay.
Correct. It's certainly a discussion we can continue.
Anybody that gets a longevity distribution a certain way now, there would be no change.
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
And you said it was going to cost $54,000 to bring up, how many employees was that?
29.
Which would be up to the new minimum of the pay range that.
And I'm looking at Attachment A where it has your new, the new pay ranges.
Those are the positions that are affected.
The ones that are affected, okay.
You're talking about the grid that has the positions, the titles, and, okay, that's the proposed new pay grade.
Attachment A is.
I have a question, but Mayor, did you want to go ahead and speak?
First off, I appreciate all of you all putting so much time into this. And I also want to remember all of the employees that are back here behind us. I was a small business owner prior to becoming the mayor. You know, everybody is entitled to their opinion with principles. I never liked the idea of caps. I think it defeats an incentive. But I would ask that this board approve both getting rid of the caps and making these employees eligible for increases. Cost of living rises annually for an employee who makes the same amount of money year after year after year. I'm sure they appreciate the job, but they're falling further and further behind with the price of gas, the price of milk, the price of school, everything on the increase. It seems to be a bit defeating to have a job where you've put in 20, 25, even 30 years and your incentive to go to work actually kind of drops because you're not keeping up with the pace of everything around you. So for the sake of the good people back here, and I would have this speech with anybody else in the business world, if you've got a good employee, reward them. If you don't, find you another employee. That's how it works. Secondly, we've hired an expert to come in here and give us advice on the market, on what the jobs that the city of Jeff deems are important and necessary to run. I ask that you take the recommendations of that professional who has analyzed what it takes to run every department in this city and has come back with recommendations. I'm not an expert. Les isn't an expert, not when it comes to analyzing the market. I ask that you take the advice of the expert that the city has hired and go with her recommendations. Are there any questions I can answer for anybody? And just so you know, I cannot speak on any conversations with Jeff Boat and NBA.
Noted.
Can confirm or deny?
Madam President, may I say something, please?
Sure.
When, on this civilian salary and wage administration policy, when I received it the other day for your all's packet, I spoke with the city attorney because the city clerks people are not addressed in here. And what he had spoken to me was, you know, it's a separate elected official's position. So I'm looking, I've spoken with some second-class city clerks, their wage, salary, wage administration policies. And I will also be submitting you all a pay grade for my employees and ask these, my employees be removed from the city since we are not part of this study or this program.
This ordinance 39?
Yes.
Move that we pass 2018 OR 39 on the first and second reading.
Well, I have more questions.
Okay.
See if they have an answer.
So Vicki, so you're suggesting that we remove your employees from this or we pass this and then once you have a separate document for like a.
You all can pass this, but the administrative policy does not address my employees at all. The only thing that address, that they're in here is pay grades.
So you're, so you ultimately would like to propose a second document that discusses the administration policy for your department?
Mm-hmm.
And then would those, would that also, then those pay grades be reflected in that document? Is that how that?
I'm going to have my own pay grades because I've spoken with several second-class cities and their deputy clerk is exempt. And we have spoken about the pay rate that she is now and we're fine with that, but it needs to be exempt. So I'm, I even talked with a couple of HR consultants and so I may be going to BPW for a contract to work with them.
And so you all will know, Ms. Conlon specifically speaking about it, as if you were published, that you are addressed, 36473 specifically in subsection D. Notwithstanding subsection B, the city clerk may, with the approval of the legislative body, fix the salaries of deputies and employees appointed under 30. under 36414, which are her, so in all candor, she is a separate part of government.
I don't have any issue with that, I just want to make sure, to know what to expect in the future and what you're working on.
So do I need to remove those from, like, the pay grade scale, too?
Once she does that-
Yeah, I think we'll keep this, and then until we have something in front of us.
Yes, because this doesn't go into effect of 2019.
Right.
Right.
Kim, what was the, what is the rationale, or I guess was, of capping an employee? Like, I just don't, I don't understand. At some point, an expert told us to put a cap. What is, if I found that expert and said, why is there a cap? What's, do you know what they-
I mean, typically, in the world of compensation, that's typically most businesses, and I know we're not typically most businesses, typically have a cap. Basically, it's designed as a piece of compensation to be able to say, as an organization, as a company, as, you know, mom and pop shop, we have decided that we can only afford to pay X number of dollars for this position. So back when I was working for Mayor Tom Gallagher, that administration decided that they wanted to have a compensation plan. And part of the result of that compensation plan, Ed, you were here, that was part of the discussion, and it was determined then to have the entry level, the midpoint, and the cap. The issue that I think we kind of sometimes run into, and I think you all heard me belabor this 100 times, but is, most organizations, if you have a true compensation plan, it does shift about every two years, and that shift will align itself with the market, so you don't have so much compression. We have not made that shift for about five years, so therefore, we have compression, which means that as some entry-level folks or mid-level folks move up in the pay grade, they're getting closer than to making the same position as some of those exempt level degree positions.
Which is why we adjusted.
Right. So, I mean, and in reality, if we truly looked at the market about every two years, that would change.
And nobody would hit their cap.
And really, there wouldn't be the issues with cap, so.
Right. But because, because government is slow, and we do things-
You said that, yeah, yes.
For five years, but they're two years.
In the private sector, we have the same challenge. I mean, our company has caps, and sometimes we can't afford people, and sometimes people don't want to grow in their position, and they cap out.
It depends on your definition of cap. I mean, technically, you adopt this, you still have a cap.
Yes, yes.
There's a maximum that you can be, starting at the salary.
I was addressing this question of why there is caps.
Right.
Well, if you don't have, but if you have the caps, then what happens is the person who's working continues, oh, they're capped out, or every year they're making less money because the cost of living is going up. Oh, I feel you. I've been capped for seven years myself, and it's not a pleasant place to be in. But I was just wondering what the experts-
And I certainly don't want to speak for Ms. Gross, our consultant, but, I mean, I think she echoed that, I mean, cap is pretty common, and what, you know, a typical recommendation would be for a compensation plan, and she suggested we look at non-monetary incentives for capped employees, such as additional PTO or other benefits, as opposed to removing caps. Now, I don't want to speak for her, but that was at least my impression from some of our initial conversations that, and she comes from, I mean, this is a unique case, and we're talking about public sector, but that was her recommendation.
And they're very broad-stroked recommendations. I mean, her goal was to say, okay, take all of this, these are the recommendations, you can kind of pick and choose, and, but-
I mean, one reason why we're here is because we're having to just, I mean, let's cut from, we're having to adjust pay rates now because that's a situation where some people are capped out. So if you continue with the policy that people are going to be capped out, and they're not going to go to pay raises, well, then you'd think that you're going to have to be adjusting these pay rates more often, which is fine.
Every two years.
But the problem is, you get into a situation where councils change, administrations change, you know, it sounds good in theory, but in practicality, it has not worked. So what we're, what we're facing, you know, is we've been doing our job in adjusting the pay raises we went along, which I think was the original intent when this was all adopted several years ago, we wouldn't have this problem.
That's exactly right. And I think the challenge is also on the low end, to get qualified people here.
Yeah. Well, and we have, some of the data that was pulled, it's not, it's not here, but we had asked Liz Gross, our consultant, to provide some data on the average tenure of employees, and what we very quickly realized is that, sure, we have an average tenure of 10 years, or 9.6 years, but that's really constructed of a whole lot of people in the, you know, one-to-five-year range, and a whole lot of people in the 30-to-40-year range.
Yes.
And so we get this average number, it's around 10, but I think we have a very unique workforce, which also presents some of the challenges that we're-
Yes.
That's what's done in the private sectors. My wife, who works for one of the largest defense contractors in the world, they have pay rates, she's maxed out, she still is eligible for annual pay raises based on her performance.
Did anybody sign up for this agenda item? I know we have a lot of employees here, was there any employees that signed up that wanted to speak in this agenda item?
Scott?
Hannah or Hinner?
No, that's heritage engineering.
Okay. Kim, we have a lot of the street department here. Can you talk to us, because we talked briefly about it, and I want to make sure there's no misconceptions, because you said, oh, you can hire in, or what? How does this address the street department? Because I think there's support in the council in recognizing that we would like to, we see, I know there's issues there of getting good people hired and keeping them for that amount of money. What changes or what applies to the street department in here?
Primarily, the pay grade changes for entry level and for CDL drivers. They've both been changed to pay, different pay grades from where they're at currently, as you can see from your pay grade sheet.
With the 35%.
And then with the 35% entry, yes, we can be more competitive with being able to hire folks in at a higher rate other than that 25%.
Actually, with the CDL, I know that was one area that we were very concerned about. I think, you know, something that we heard often, repeated in our committee meetings, was that, you know, you need to think about the sustainability of this, and looking at, you know, people do retire, people leave positions, and when we're hiring to fill those positions, we want to be competitive and really be, adjust these things to the market, and that's really what I feel confident we've presented here. And actually, you know, we've, because of the 35%, we've even increased that sum to be even more competitive. So I think in terms of sustainability and looking at how we can continue to recruit great talent, this puts the city in a great position to do that.
And like I said at the workshop, I mean, why do we not want to be an employer of choice? I mean, Dustin made a comment today that echoes exactly, I think, what my thoughts are exactly, and a lot of department heads. Why do we want to always have to compare ourselves to everybody else? Why don't we want to be the organization where people compare themselves to?
One thing to add to Cali's statement about wanting to be, you know, incentivizing in recruitment, one thing that isn't addressed here that we need to look forward to after we get this passed, because I support, you know, passing what the mayor's presented and what you recommend, but moving forward, not only do we need to, are we, are we working on recruitment with this, but we need to work on our retirement, looking at our retirement benefits also.
Amen.
I know we have-
For civilian employees.
Civilian employees. I know we have a number of employees who I've had conversations with and have taken calls, you know, phone messages-
Have asked them to reach out to council members.
That have said, hey, you know, I love working for the city, I would love to retire, but I can't afford it. And if we have employees who've been here 30 years or 20 years, you know, they should be able to retire when they're ready, but they have to be able to afford it. And I think, right now, we have a retirement package that is very lopsided for a good number, 194 of our employees, not in our favor.
Yes.
We already agreed we have to have a workshop on that.
Let me know, I'll meet tomorrow.
Well, I just, I don't, I don't want to see something like that.
Okay.
I don't want to see something like that go to a committee, because a committee met for three months.
You've been to council meetings before. We talked a lot.
I didn't hear the motion, I heard the motion.
To be clear, we're moving from 25 to 35. We're bringing up the 29 employees and removing the caps. That's what we're being asked.
Yes, we'll still have the caps, other than the individuals, the employees that are capped will still be allowed to have up to whatever that maximum pay increase is. Now, obviously, that, again, is aligned with performance.
And also, there were changes to the pay grades themselves, so that was restructuring. We don't have, like, a 4A.
Right, right.
And we're not changing anything to do with longevity.
I'm not touching that tonight, no.
Okay. I second the motion.
One question that I have, and it's about street maintenance and refuge workers. Does this pay range change affect those that are CDL drivers, or?
CDL drivers are going to be in a different pay grade.
They're going to be in a different pay grade.
Yes.
I have a question. On, in, in the illustration here, it says years to max and years to mid. So if it says years to max 15, what does that mean?
Basically, on the premise, if somebody starts at the entry level, and with our average of 3% pay grades, or pay increases every year, it would take that long to get to the maximum.
Thank you.
Which these are much, that was another thing that was added, is they were made much larger, so that there is more room, yeah, there is more room for growth as people are hired in.
We got a motion and a second on the floor. Let me go ahead and acknowledge that, and then when I say any further discussion, if that's okay, we can keep going. So I got a motion and a second to pass 2018 OR 39 on the first and second reading. Is there any further discussion?
I just have a comment. Kim, you had mentioned that this is only going to affect, like, $50-something thousand of a change.
$54,000.
Fifty-four.
Fifty-four, six, seventeen, to be exact.
Well, a little over $22,000 of that is for three people.
Yes.
And that's, that's my struggle, is, is when we hire people in at key positions, they know what those positions are, and then every, however many years, we go back to look, and it seems like then we're, those, those top positions are getting large bonuses, or not bonuses, larger increases than the folks, in my opinion, that really need-
Well, I look at, yeah, and I understand where you're coming from, but I look at it in a different perspective. I look at it in the perspective that they were probably not paid appropriately and were not appropriately placed when the position was created. And if you look at market, you look at IT in particular, I mean, look at the growth in IT, and I did have the consultant look at the 2018 AIM data, per council president's request, and the data for that supports those positions. For the 2017 AIM report, and, not that that's one marker that you look at, but just to, to maybe have that ease of mind.
Keep in mind, Nathan, that this is for 2019, so we can have some more discussion during budget time, too.
And this hasn't been adjusted for five years, so we're also playing catch-up with that.
Yeah, absolutely.
If they'd done it every two years, or if the council, the time was done it every two years, then we wouldn't be dealing with-
Exactly. So basically, at the end of 2019, when I start coming back and talking again, you're going to think, gosh, you were just here. Well, I was just here, but like I had in the PowerPoint, I started that in 2016. So it's going to seem like I keep coming back, but I keep coming back because I'm not going to let it go, and because sometimes it gets struck out.
Let me speak from just another perspective. I was with the county, I think he was too, prior to coming to the city. We lost good employees on a regular basis, and it was, it was frustrating to see good employees come in and work through the whole first floor, and the good ones would find something someplace else. We're not in that situation now, but if we don't keep this up to date, we will become that. It's very frustrating to have quality employees, and somebody else grabs them from you. There's plenty of new employers around here who are looking.
I was just saying, unfortunately, we keep bringing great businesses here that-
Yeah.
But I, I can tell you, it was very frustrating being in that county building, and the IT guy, he, when I came here, he wanted to come with me. So we were very fortunate to get Matt Dyer here with IT. Glad we've got him, want to make sure we keep him. Same with every other employee we're dealing with here today.
And this also raises the minimum for all full-time employees to $14 an hour, I believe?
Uh, fourteen, yes, fourteen.
With that 35%, if the person has the necessary qualifications, that can make sure that people make at least $15 an hour when they're hired in.
Absolutely.
All the question.
Okay, I got a motion and a second to pass 2018 OR 39. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries.
That's the first and second reading.
Thank you all.
That was the first and second reading.
Thank you.
Kim, thank you so much for all of your efforts. All of your, I apologize for what I did. I'm sorry, before we move on, I just, while Kim's in the room, I just really want to thank Kim and the committee for those discussions, and for Heather, she was in on all of those meetings. It doesn't go unnoticed, so that was a big call, let's keep, keep it moving forward. All right, so, actually, so we're handing out ordinances. I actually want to first ask, because it seems, oh, I don't know where they start and which, where my packet ends. It seems that the more that we discuss this, the more we go around and around, and-
Talked about this before.
The more we go around and around, and I think that the intent of looking at our nonprofit policy was to, not because there's a pressing concern of overspending or spending a lot of money toward nonprofit organizations, at least in my term, because we wanted to have more transparency and maybe get away from things being just brought to the council and presented, or certain council members sponsoring certain events or organizations. So that's really where the conversation started. The more that we unpackage this, and I think we might all agree on this, it seems to me that the best solution might be to continue as we have been, and if there is a growing, if there is a growing concern or a problem in our spending, or we feel that we can't support certain projects, then we continue as we have been, where nonprofit organizations come before the council on a case-by-case basis, and we feel no obligation to support those nonprofit organizations. I personally would like to see us moving away from having tables at annual events. I think that in particular is something that we've seen a lot of, that I just would like to see moving away from, and will likely not support in the future. But I think it's maybe time to draw a line in the sand and say, let's keep things how we are. So at this point, I want to open a discussion on that option, and if there's any objections to that.
I didn't prefer that one.
And that's, does it, we don't need one. Good for you, you can just delete it from the agenda, so.
Well, if we do go with any of these, the order's to say 17, and you say 2018. Well, you know.
I'm living on different-
Go on, go on. I was going to say, yeah, that, those are the, I think, I expressed the same comments at our last meeting. I think that every council has a different, it's a different flavor, a different interest, and this, whatever we pass today would just only be enforced really for one year, and then we have a new council that would do it their way. I mean, I've seen that happen over the change of councils. And just, just for an example, I think the idea of us buying tables is fantastic, end up having a lot, we have more participation, and council people show up to local community events, and, you know, supporting local events, so see, right off the bat, there's one where we, you know, disagree, and I might win that vote, you might win that vote, and who knows what the next council would be like. So I support that last comment. I know you put a lot of work in this, but I support continuing that.
I'm okay to let it go. I'm okay. I'm okay with that. Any other thoughts on keeping things as they've been?
I can't believe the comments that I've gotten from public, the calls that I even received today, and the last one I received before I came here was from a lady in Arctic Springs, and she real, I don't know what article she was referring to, but she was referring to several articles, and she was very adamant to, and wanted me to let everyone know that she was not for council people having a pot of money to decide, and their pot of money, and it was kind of echoed, and I had, actually was concerned from other nonprofits. One was that we've contributed to in the past, Clark County Care, so there's a lot that, boy, we, we didn't think about to go into this, so I'm kind of at the point now where I'm like, let's just keep going.
And I, you know, I, as someone that's been kind of the spokesperson for this endeavor, I, you know, I personally feel that as a city, you know, and as managing taxpayer dollars, we need to be cautious of supporting nonprofit organizations. I think that if taxpayers want to make donations to nonprofit organizations, then they should do so, and I don't know if the council- And I don't know if the council should make that decision for them. But I also recognize that there are a lot of rare, weird exceptions to that, and there are organizations that we support that do a lot of the good in the community. So, yeah. And I know Councilman Ellis had suggested that, my suggestion would be to keep the special projects fund as it is and to not allocate any of that money toward council representatives and to just continue again as we have nonprofit organizations that request funds for them to present to the council, and we can make those decisions then. So I would not support money allocated to individual council members, but that can certainly be another discussion if we would like to have it, so. And thank you, Larry, for putting these together for me to just kind of rip them up and. All right, with, I guess I will propose to remove or delete this from our agenda so it doesn't keep reappearing. Is that the proper way to move forward?
That's fine.
All right, so I make a motion to remove item number 19 from our agenda and for future agendas.
Do I have a second?
I certainly do.
Got a motion and a second to permanently remove item number 19, the non-profits. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Thank you, Callie. I know you put a lot of time and effort into that. Next, we have Paul Northam. He wants to talk to us on Vising Park, and I'd ask for him to bring up his new assistant and introduce her to the council. Welcome.
Sorry you picked this meeting.
You met a lot of employees tonight, didn't you?
Thank you. Just here to introduce you to, first of all, to Amber Riding. She is the new member of the Parks Department, Assistant Director of Parks and Recreation. She comes from the YMCA and has a lot of experience and education, and we're happy to have her. And I'm putting her out there for any questions.
Oh, gosh. When do you start?
Started today.
Today was my first official-
It's a long day.
Yes. Still standing up.
I think you left a lot because we can't fix my dress on.
That's probably true. Yes.
Paul, does she know anything about goats?
Goats.
We talked briefly about goats the other day.
Is her email and everything all set, set up?
It is.
Since she is, basically, you're the assistant, if you could just email her contact number out to council, that would be greatly appreciated.
Sure, yeah.
I don't necessarily have anything to add on this, but I do want to say that I saw lots of pictures and postings on the new feature that was installed and looks to be operational and everybody enjoying it, so.
At the Aquatic Center?
Yeah, at the Aquatic. Have you gotten any feedback from that?
Lot of positive feedback on that new piece of equipment. Thank you again for letting us take money out of-
Happy to see it. Looks a whole lot more fun than what was there before, so.
Would you wish to speak about Vising Park?
Yeah, and, and speaking again about Park Surplus. So we met with some of the council members, and those of you who made it, I appreciate you coming out to Vising Park a few weeks ago to look at the work that was done by Echotech to try to get rid of some invasive species at Vising, back in the woodland area. I think you've got a copy of the Echotech report here and what they're asking to do and what we're asking them to do. But there are some invasive plant removal in the woodland area that, that will increase the wildlife use, improve aesthetics, and increase usability of the property for recreational purposes. Some of the invasive species are the Japanese honeysuckle, multiflora rose, Asian privet, calorie pear, tree of heaven, winter creeper, garlic mustard, and Japanese stillgrass. So there is a lot of this bad stuff in there, but there's also some good stuff in there. So we're trying to get rid of the bad stuff so we can promote the growth of the good stuff. Also, with thinning out the forest, it'll allow a more safer use by the public when they're walking the trails. They'll be able to see right through the forest there. It won't be as clean as like what we've done at Allison Park where we've completely taken out everything and there are just trees there, but all of the bad stuff will be gone, and it'll open up the area for a safer experience for our customers and our-
You brought that up, Paul, I'm going to echo on that because Vising is my district. So I knew this was coming up, so I like to go up while people are enjoying the park and ask them, and we do have quite a few that don't utilize our trails because, and I didn't realize it was such a thing, because it's been a while since I've been back there. They say it's so thick, or, now you have kids that want to run ahead and, you know, you can't keep up. You've got multiple kids, some running behind, some running behind, and they can't see. So I'm glad you did bring that up.
Sure. So going through the options here, we're not going to go with all of them. We're recommending to go with just three of the six options here. Option one, the $19,470 for the tree and shrub treatment of 22 acres of the 23 acres. As you remember, the one acre has already been done. And then a follow-up of the full 23 acres in the year two, so it would be a fall, I'm sorry, make sure I'm correct there. It is a late summer to through fall of 2018 for the first initial application. The follow-up would be spring of 2019. Option three, we're not going to do it this time. Option four, we'd like to do, and that is what some people call suckers, but vines growing up the trees, taking over and choking out those trees. We'd like to add that feature. And then five and six, we're not doing it this time either. We already have addressed some of the trees at Vising Park. As a matter of fact, there are some trees up there that have fallen, well, one in particular that had fallen on a homeowner's shed, and we took care of that, we replaced that, and now we're going to do some work on his shed. But we're, we've got some, we've identified some trees on the perimeter of Vising Park that are at risk of falling. And we're going to talk about that in two weeks when we put that on the agenda. But as far as removing it this time, we've got another plan for that. And the, the option six there, we're not going with either. So we're asking for a total of $32,130 to do this work, and I'm asking to take that money out of our Park Surplus. And I believe we have, you know how much we have in there?
Um, I-
I was thinking it's around $800,000.
What was the total amount again, Paul? Assuming that we only have $30,000. Right, that's all the dollars given. And we can't go higher, so.
Okay.
We're going to have to reduce that to $30,000 for now.
We can do that. We'll make that work.
Has it already been advertised?
Yeah.
I'm not sure how that happened. It's probably on me. But it came back and-
You need a motion approved?
Right.
No, not to begin, we have it, it's number 22 on our agenda tonight.
So this is going from, this is going from the Parks General to Parks contractual, Heather, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
But we're-
I can have the other $2,000 carry on another ordinance.
We're going to have that additional anyway.
Oh, yeah, that's right. So we can add it on to that.
Okay.
Okay. So Paul, you want to just stick around just a few minutes, because we'll take action on that. We have that on additional appropriation. It said, we've got another agenda item, then it's that, so you will-
I have a question.
Sure.
Go ahead.
Would that entire amount be expended this year or would we have to reappropriate it next year?
That amount will take care of everything this year and everything next year, included in-
Okay.
Right. Yeah, oh, good question. Thank you.
Okay. Well, so Paul, if you just hang back a little bit, I'll move on to the next agenda item, and then we'll come back to that.
Okay, thank you.
Heather, we have an ordinance transferring within the same department, and I do believe this is, this is easy. This is just within your department for computers, correct?
Yes, our computers are getting to the point where we need to be replacing them, so my plan is to have two new computers every year. So this is for two, and then in the budget next year, two more.
For in your budget, so I support. So I'll entertain a motion. This is 40.
Second.
Got a motion and a second to pass 2018 OR 40. Any further discussion?
First and second, or all?
They said first and second.
That one.
Second, oh.
So all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Thank you.
Motion carries. So Heather, we'll move right into Paul's additional appropriation. And just for the, the public since nothing's up, the $30,000 is for what Paul just spoke on.
Yes.
I'll just say, I wasn't able to attend the Vising Park meeting tour, but I appreciate, Paul, your thoroughness in this and really including the council and being able to see what some of the problems are and then giving these recommendations. And with that, I'll make a motion to support 2018 OR 41 on the first and second.
Second.
Got a motion and a double second for 2018 OR 41 on the first and second. Is there any further discussion?
Yes, one of the problems that I continue to have when we come to ordinances of additional appropriations is that as long as there is money in a specific budget that can be transferred to, within that department, I don't feel that there should be additional appropriations coming out of it. I would love, love to see a budget used up before we put more money in a budget. The reason for that is if we don't at some point take that stand, well, then why have a budget? Just give whatever you need whenever you want it. And so I will be voting against this.
Okay, so all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Is there any department heads that wish to speak? Okay, then we will move on. Is the, do we have a city council attorney report?
Absolutely not.
And there was no public comment, correct?
No public comment.
All right, then we'll move on to council com, oh, what? Bill, did you have a-
No, stick around a second, Bill. Stick around a second if you can. I'm going to talk to him.
Oh, okay.
I was giving him a signal.
Okay. I didn't know he needed to come up and speak. Councilperson White, do you have any council comments?
Almost got called on the carpet, Bill.
Yeah.
I do not.
Councilperson Disboni.
Nope.
Councilperson Yon.
Happy 4th of July, everyone. Have a good 4th of July.
So happy spirit.
And enjoy that hot heat index of 110 degrees. Also, I just, again, want to echo, a lot of effort was put into that salary administration policy and the pay grades. I'm very grateful for Kim's dedication to that. And if you saw her binder and all of the, she has all of her minutes on it, all of the workshop details, it's about this big. She, we're just so lucky to have such a fantastic HR director. So thank you for your support on that new pay grade policy. Also, if you haven't seen AIM, the association, Accelerate Indiana Municipalities, has two webinars coming up that are open to council members. One is Start Planning for the Holidays in the Workplace. And the second is Highlighting Public Art, Nathan, so you might be interested in that. And I will forward that email to council just so you can, you can register for those if you're, any of those topics interest you. That's all. Thank you.
Councilperson Maples.
Two things. Fourth of July Parade downtown, I believe it's 10:30 this Wednesday. Also, I was at a National Sheriff's Office conference and was sitting, talking to a guy from another sheriff's office. This is all natural, I mean, all sheriff's offices in the country. And as we were talking, we were talking about where we were from, and, you know, he's asking what my population is of the county I represent. I asked him where he's from. He was from Los Angeles County, California, population 11 million. And during our conversation, it came up that we were going to, the National Sheriff's Office Convention next year is going to be in Louisville, Kentucky. And his wife said, I've been to Louisville once, I really love that town across the river from it, Jeffersonville, Indiana. Now, keep in mind, this guy was the number four guy at Los Angeles County. He had 47,000 officers or something on his department. And his wife distinctly remembered Jeffersonville and was looking forward to when she comes back this time visiting again. I was telling her about the growth. I know everybody's excited about Jeff as it is, but when you get a guy that's in a very important role of a enormous county bragging about our little town here and was actually talking about how he wasn't looking forward to staying in Louisville too much, and I told him about the, the new hotel down here, so they're probably just going to stay in Jeffersonville.
Did your chest pop up and say, why, I just happened to live?
You speak to a lot of people. I've, I've never spoke to a guy that was a number four guy with 11 million population sheriff's office. I thought maybe, you know, maybe a couple hundred thousand. But no, so I was just kind of proud of our city when I heard that.
Good, yeah.
Sure.
Councilperson Hawke.
Happy original Brexit Day. Two days early to everyone. So glad we live in this republic, we do. And that's it.
Councilperson Owen.
No comments.
Councilperson Ellis.
Yes. I serve on the Board of Directors of Community Action Agency, and Community Action Agency has a shortage of members on the Board of Directors. As a matter of fact, the shortage has gotten to a critical level. And Vicky Conlin has been suggested to be one of our board members, but she needs to be appointed by a democratically elected board. So I would ask this board to appoint Vicky Conlin to the member of the Community Action Agency Board of Directors. I make that motion.
Second.
Got a motion and a second to appoint Vicky Conlin to the Board of Directors for the-
Community Action Agency, Southern Indiana.
Vicky, you want to do that? I was going to say, they've tried to put me on board before.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Congratulations. Thank you. Is that all you have?
That's all I have.
Councilperson Samuel.
Okay.
All right, I have a reminder that there is the executive session before our next meeting at 6 o'clock. I will send out reminders and email or text, whatever. And it's also come to my attention that we have a very outdated travel ordinance. It was established by 2008 OR 10. So be looking for your emails. I'm going to send out a copy of that and just want you all to look that over and see if you have any suggestions or comments, whatever, because I'd really like to, as I'm going to be meeting with certain department heads, to try to get that, get that updated and get some gray areas cleared out. And kind of what we did with the credit card ordinance, we just updated our pay grades and all that, but we need to upgrade that salary ordinance. And then I just wanted to say one thing.